So good evening, everyone. I am going to call the zoning board of appeals March twenty second, twenty twenty two meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. So Norma Drummond, Chair of the Zoning Board. Jim.
James Meyer.
Aziz Asen.
And we do expect Rocco to join us. He just warned us up as we speak. I just said we were expecting Rocco to join us, so. For purposes of roll call, Rocco has joined us. Uh, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic which it stands. Thank you, everyone. All right. Let me just read this statement real quick. Good evening and welcome to the East Fiscal Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of March twenty second, twenty twenty two. Due to the public health and safety concerns associated with the COVID nineteen pandemic, the board is meeting via video conference using the Zoom platform in accordance with the governor's executive orders. There is no in-person public participation tonight. Rather, the public can watch the live meeting through Zoom online and on on cable. Tonight, on notice of tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on this, on the agenda this evening, public comments will taken at be will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any of their own questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and is transcript will be available at a later date. We start our meetings tonight with some administrative issues, then we will hold a number of public hearings, which will be on applications that the board has already reviewed and now wants to hear from the neighbors as we recognize you know these areas better than we do. I will introduce each agenda item, so everyone will know which item we are working on. Finally, we will get to reviews, which are generally the first time we review applications or our applications where the applicants needed to get this board additional information. There will be no public comment on any of these reviews this evenings. Uh, neighbors will be noticed on these applications at the appropriate time for some future meeting. If you wish to comment on an application that has a public hearing when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following, depending on whether you're on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time if you would like to make a comment. The feature is located at the bottom of your screen. Those attending via the telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised and that you have pressed star nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon, so we have it for the record. Uh, just some ground rules in order to keep the meeting orderly and ensure we get a clear recording, please follow these ground rules. One, when you are given access to speak, please state your name and address. It is helpful for the board members to know if you are a neighbor to an application. Two, board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I'm not calling on you, you can also use the raise hand function or literally just raise your hands like as I can see. Uh, you across the screen. Uh, and three board members also, please mute yourselves when you're not speaking. This is especially important if you're not the only one at home at your house or you have animals who might bark. And four, we will use roll call voting for purposes of all board motions. This is to ensure that the record is clear. Thank you in advance to everyone for your patience and please bear with us as we conduct our meeting this way. So. All right. So with that said, we're going to go. Right to agenda. So, um, we do have one set of minutes. Uh, I don't have any co-chairperson comments at this point. But we do have one set of minutes from February twenty second, uh, which with just a handful of amendments to it. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Uh, Rocco seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, April twenty sixth and Tuesday, May twenty fourth. Um, and I don't have any other administrative issues at this point, so we're going to go right into public hearings. So item number one is appeal four zero two five Anthony Ferenti, Anthony Ferenti sixty one Rainbow Crest Court Hopewell Junction requesting a thirty-three foot rear line variance for an existing dwelling. And a proposed twenty foot by sixteen foot, three hundred and twenty square foot addition for to pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Miss, oh, Brian's here. Good. Okay.
Hey, guys. How are you?
Good. How are you? Okay, so we saw this application last month. Um. And. Sorry, I'm just trying to get the this one in front of me. Fortunately, my folder got turned around, so this one's not. Okay, here we go. So Brian, um, for the purposes of any neighbors who might be here, um. This is the property that actually has is a corner lot. It's on in the cul-de-sac of Rainbow Crest, but it's also Sunshine Lane.
Correct.
Okay, and so the driveway is off of Rainbow Crest. Um, the house itself is twenty-six point two feet from the corner, uh, from what you know, the side yard there. Um, or what could be actually also be the rear yard. That's the issue that one of the issues that we found was that you actually have. Two front yards. And so you're proposing an addition off the back because the front yard is where your septic is in your one hundred percent expansion area for the septic. And that's really just what makes the most sense in terms of what for this addition. The addition's going to match the existing finish of the house. Right? And the use of this space is not a bedroom.
Not a bedroom, just expanded living space for the, uh, for the applicant.
Right. Anything else you want to add into the record?
Um, I think, um, I think Jackie, hopefully the letters from the neighbors, um, got to you, um, and got into the folder. Um, so we did have some, some neighbors' comments, um, that we added to the file that were positive. Um. And then, uh, just specific to the addition, it's again, it's for livable space for the client. The, the client was, was looking for, uh, two family houses in the area that were a little bit larger. The availability of them is rather slim. And, um, every attempt they made to try to get into contractor, um, even get into one, um, fell short just due to the pandemic and the utility, uh, real estate market here. So they fell back on to just trying to do an addition on their existing house. And again, just get some more separation between, um, uh, parents and the younger family.
Any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I do not have any questions or comments.
I'm fine.
Okay, so. We opened the public hearing on this, so we're good for that. So, um, so let me read the two letters that I have into the record. Uh, the first one is to whom it may concern. I, Lori Befoli reside at sixty-four Rainbow Crest Hopewell Junction, New York, one, two, five, three, three. I have been informed by my neighbor. Mister and Mrs. Ferenti at sixty-one Rainbow Crest Hopewell Junction are asking for a variance. I am fully aware of the layout and residential use of this addition. And given and give my full blessing on this addition if granted from the town board. This home is across the street and since the addition will be placed on the opposite. Visible side of the home, I will have minimal sight and believe what is visible will blend into the current structure. Um, thus causing no undesirable view or impact on my family. Sincere Lori Befoli and big veto Befoli. So that's letter number one. And then letter number two, um, to whom it may concern. I am the resident of twenty-seven Sunshine Lane, Hopewell Junction. I have been notified by my neighbors that's of sixty-one Rainbow Crest. Hopewell Junction about their desire to put an addition on their home and they are requesting a variance from the town. I, I. Being the immediate and only direct neighbor would be the most impacted by this addition. They've informed me and shown me the anticipated size, location and layout of the addition to be used for residential purposes. This addition would run along the side of my home and side yard. This would not have any bearing on my space and vision as I have no windows located on the side of the home. And my entrance and driveway are on the complete opposite side of my home. In addition, there is a significant tree line separating the properties which shields the vision of their home majority of the year throughout the seasons. I'm typing this letter to inform East Fiscal Zoning Board that I have no disapproval of the variance being granted, and that's from Janet Aden Arrow. So thank you for taking the time to get the neighbors' letters. That's very helpful for us. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against the request from Anthony Ferenti at sixty-one Rainbow Crest?
Uh, so Mr. Ron Earl, um, would like to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I live at eighty-one Rainbow Crest. Um, directly, my, my plot backs right up to Anthony's. Um, I'm just curious, why does he need a thirty-three foot variance for a twenty-foot addition?
Because that existing house itself does not conform with zoning. That's the original part. The house is. It's this because he's got two front yards. This is actually considered a rear yard, so that house should have been fifty feet away from the property line. And so.
There was a, so there was an addition put on that house not too many years ago, I guess, you know, better than I do, but five, five to seven years ago, they did an addition. Um, was, is that, is that new addition in violation of the code?
I don't know what's considered what addition you're talking about.
Well, it's the only new construction I'm aware of in the last. Five years.
So are you at the end of Rainbow Crest? Are you his neighbor on the other side?
I, I am on the corner of Rainbow Crest and Warren Farm. So the back of my house. Well, I'm in a similar situation to him, but, uh, our houses back up to one another.
I mean, there are two. I can't, I can't tell from the survey whether they're decks or additions or whatever. There are two boxes on the. Back of his house. Um.
You see his well on the survey? So. His, I'm, I'm the neighbor. My well is right next to his well.
Okay, yeah, I see as well.
Yep. So. I, I don't understand why the, why he's not in conform, conformance with the zone today.
I'm, I'm assuming that there, if there was an addition done, there was a CO granted, and at the time that that was, that action was performed. You know, if a seal was granted and there was no violations when this application, you know, this, this application being presented to the board would have triggered a, a search of the code. And any violations on the lot, so. Um, I'm assuming that if there was an addition done, it had a CEO, there was no violations triggered with this.
And I. Yeah, I, I don't agree with that because there are other violations on the lot. He's got two sheds side by side. Each one is a hundred square feet. And they're right on the property line, so he's got too many sheds and they're too close to the property line, so I don't agree with you.
So where are the sheds aren't showing up on the survey that we were given?
So the sheds are. If you see where the well is, the sheds are. Adjacent to the well further away from Rainbow Crest than the well.
All right, Brian, this survey is dated October thirty-first, nine, uh, twenty twenty-one. So this survey is just four months old, but not even five months old. Why would those sheds not be showing up on the survey?
I think that was the, I think that was a survey given, um, that we were working off of when the house was constructed and there was overlays on top of that. Um, if there sheds out there, we'll locate them. Um, I don't think you need a permit for a shed under a hundred and twenty square feet, correct?
The first.
Hundred square feet, I remember.
The first one, for, for any second shed, you need a permit.
Right, if they don't, if they don't have one, then we'll look into that. It's first I'm hearing of it.
Matt, when somebody went from the building department went out, did they see two sheds that were on the property line?
Yeah, I saw two sheds and, uh, there was a permit granted for the second shed or a CC application. September of twenty fourteen, application number sixty-eight seventy-one.
So that shed is in a proper place.
That's correct.
And what is this, what's the setback from the property line supposed to be for a shed?
These days, it's just fifteen feet, right?
Correct. Yeah, I'd be surprised if it's fifteen feet.
But didn't, did they know about the deck being, getting into a living space? Does, what, is there a deck on that survey?
We survey room. A three, uh, three, we, there is a, I, I have a permit for a, um. An addition, but it was a three-season room.
Agreed. Now, is that three-season room too close to the property line? Is that where we're coming up with a thirteen-foot delta?
I like, yeah, I don't.
No, that, that's not up for discussion this evening. So the addition that they're looking to do this evening is far, is farther away. It's actually closer to Sunshine Lane that it then it's not on the Rainbow Crest side of their house.
Okay.
So that's why it would be more impactful to the neighbor that they, that sent a letter from Sunshine Lane.
Well, we were just confused because we didn't know what.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I, I do hear, just for the record, if you could state your, the woman who's speaking, if she could just state her name.
My name is Gina Earl.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, but yeah, the, the, the application that's before us is for an addition on the other side, so those other. Those other, um, the other addition and the, uh, the existing structures don't, do not need variances.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Uh. And I'd like a validation on the sheds because I, I, I don't think they're fifteen feet from the property line, but it's possible that I'm mistaken.
Yeah, Norma, we could, we could, uh, we could update that survey.
Okay, thank you. It isn't, and then the app, you know, your applicant has to understand that if they're not in compliance, he's got to move them.
Absolutely.
Okay, but the fact that he's got, um, you know, the appropriate permits tells me that they're probably in the right place, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Earl, and okay, good, thank you. Um, anybody else wish to speak?
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
All right, so seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Rocco, you want to go?
Sure.
Um, and Rocco, if you could just in your, in finishing the resolution, just add a condition about making sure the, the sheds are in the right place, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It could be upon the, um, it's. In the resolution, if, if the board decides to grant it be upon condition that, at, um, the shed of confirmation that the sheds are conform with the code.
Appeal number four zero two five applicant is Anthony Ferenti. Request for a thirty-three foot rear line variance from the requirements of the scheduled bulk regulations for the existing dwelling. And a proposed twenty by sixteen, three hundred and twenty square foot addition. Location is sixty-one Rainbow Crest and Hopewell Junction. Resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the applicant is seeking a variance for the existing dwelling and to construct an addition on the northwestern side of the existing structure. And whereas the addition would lead to an increase in living space and no additional bedrooms. And whereas the applicant is also proposing a second addition, which does not require variance. And whereas the applicant was limited in where it could be put. Where it could put the additions through the location of the existing septic system. And whereas the property is at the corner of Rainbow Crest and Sunshine Lane. Which creates limitations for the property. And whereas this is a type-two action under Secra. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the zoning board of appeals have a public hearing on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that. The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property and it being a corner lot. The variance is substantial, but the existing house was built and received a certificate of occupancy in the current location. And the addition in this area is pretty minimal in size and only twenty by sixteen, three hundred and twenty square feet. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby, under confirmation. That the sheds that are currently there are in the proper location in regards to, uh. In regards to distance from the, from the sight lines and that they have the appropriate variances if needed. Approves the request of Anthony Ferenti for a thirty-three foot rear line variance. From the requirements from the scheduled bulk regulations for the existing dwelling and proposed twenty by sixteen, three hundred and twenty square foot addition. Be further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair. Or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
So, thank you. I have a second from Jim. Votes as follows. Jim?
Hi.
Aziz?
Hi.
And Rocco?
Hi.
And myself, I, so the motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, you're all set on that one. So item number two is appeal four zero two six Jeffrey Argo. Jeffrey Argo, three Brusque Drive, Hopewell Junction is requesting a seventeen-foot sideline variance to allow a proposed twenty-five foot by thirty foot or seven hundred and fifty square foot detached garage pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so. Mister Brusque. Sorry, Mister Brusque Drive, Mister Argo. I have his application right in front of me. So his is the, there's a bunch of, of additions here. So his is the one that, um. When we reviewed this, he has the addition that was going pretty close to the property line because he has a patio or walkway that runs between. The existing house and the, the proposed garage. And so where his driveway is and the turnaround that he needs for to be able to use the garages already within the house. Um, makes it kind of pushed back where the, the garage needed to be. In our discussions last month, Brian. Um, we talked about whether the property could move back a couple feet. Uh, you thought it could, and then that would, then it could actually move it then in closer and kind of like get a little bit tucked behind the house. So if you could tell us what has changed from there and where we're at with that, that I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we took your suggestions, uh, from the board. So originally we came in with a, of, um, a twenty-one foot side yard. Variance, which means we were four foot off the property line. Um, and talking to the board, we doubled that. So now we're eight feet. Um, from the edge of the property line, we moved the garage, um, over toward the house and back behind, um, the sidewalk slightly so that we can create that. Um, you know, just an additional buffer between the, the structure and the neighbor. Um, there is, there is a tree line through there, but I think, um, you know, by pushing that. Structural over another four feet, we can just gain some more, some more green space between.
And so we're, we've minimized the variance that's required.
Correct.
Right? So instead of needing the, originally, I think you were at like twenty-one feet. Now where you're down to see needing seventeen feet.
Yes.
Okay, um, and so even the twenty-five feet is the width of it, thirty feet is the depth. So, you know, it's, you, you really for a two-bay garage, that's the. Pretty much the minimum size that you need to be able to get two garage doors in, so. Um, the finish on the garage is going to match the house. It's, the use is all going to be residential. It's. I think you said there's going to be storage on the second floor with this one, right? There's going to be a full set of stairs and storage.
Uh, it's the intent to have, have the ability just to, to put some belongings up top, no apartment, obviously.
Right, no residential space, no plumbing, no, you know, but there would be electric in the garage.
Yes.
Okay, comments or questions from board members?
On.
I'm good.
Right, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding the application from Jeffrey Argo, three Brusque Drive, Hopewell Junction requesting a seventeen-foot sideline variance to allow a proposed. Twenty-five foot by thirty foot or seven hundred and fifty square foot detached garage. Mister Costinko.
Uh, yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so I'm part of the family at, uh, thirty Duran Drive, which is on the east edge of the property. Unfortunately, I mean, there's been nothing but words. Can somebody hold up just a simple picture of what's being proposed?
Yeah, I think, um, I have the ability to share the screen here.
That would be helpful, Brian, because us holding it up wouldn't look so good. There we go.
No, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'm going to pan over here. So we have the existing driveway, um, coming in off of Brusque. We have the house. This is the driveway turnaround, the house. Uh, deck in the back, walkway around from the garage to the deck area. And then what we're proposing here is, uh, this, this shaded box area here, um, is the detached garage, so twenty-five foot wide, thirty foot long. Um, and what we did is originally we had this garage further up near this, this offset of thirty-six feet. This, this garage was pushed up and closer to the property line. And then I'm just talking it through with the board, um, trying to minimize, uh, the variance as best we could, plus provide some buffer. To the neighbor, um, toward the west, we kicked it over for a total of eight feet between structure and property line. And you can see we, we kind of tucked this behind this walkway here. So this structure will be located, you know, largely behind the house. And trying to meet the goals of our, of our last meeting.
And Mister Costinko, your house is on the other, your property is on the other side of this.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so, you know, this, you can see the north arrow, right? So, uh, would be east and from the words, this is what I imagined it would look like, but. There's nothing better than a, a plot map. So, yeah, so this makes perfect sense. I'm, I'm, uh. Uh, as far as elevations or any elevations changing here or?
No, this is, this is pretty much come right off the driveway and then, um, come right, you know, right into the, the garage doors of the, uh, of the proposed structure.
Okay, so, so the slope line of the driveway doesn't change. You just go right into the garage. There's no ramp or anything like that.
No, we're going to keep it, you know, try to keep the costs in line, uh, rather put the costs into the, into the structure versus regrading and. So we're going to just come right into the garage. Obviously, it'll be sloped away to, you know, prevent water intrusion coming down the driveway into the garage, so there'll be a little bit of increase.
Right.
But, you know, that's, it's, try to keep it as possible.
Okay, so it's two-story structure, you're saying?
It's, it's basically like a story and a half, so it's not a full story on the second, the story, you know, you have your trusses that come in. Um, there's, there's some area above, but obviously we're just going to have that for, you know, accessible storage area.
Oh, okay, so it's a, sick call, one half, so, so it's about the same height as the house then?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine, then I'm, then I'm fine. Thank you for answering the questions.
Sure, thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions or comments?
If anybody else like to speak, please raise your hand. Uh, no hands are raised.
Okay, so seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. And resolution?
Uh, Jim?
Okay, in reference to appeal number four zero two six by Jeffrey Argo. Located at Free Brusque Drive, Hopewell Junction, New York. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. Whereas the applicant is proposing a detached garage with storage above. Whereas the applicant is not proposing living space above the garage. Whereas due to the location of the existing driveway, the only feasible place is where the garage is proposed. Whereas after the applicant's first meeting with the board, he reduced its requested variance from twenty-one feet to seventeen feet. Whereas this is a type-two action under CEQA. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the zoning board of appeals had a public hearing on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that granting of the variance will not produce an. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as a property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of driveway and the walkway that runs between the existing house and the proposed garage. Variance is substantial, but has been reduced by the applicant after discussion with during his review. Variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of Jeffrey Argo for a seventeen foot sideline variance. The requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations from both twenty-five foot by thirty foot for seven hundred and fifty square foot detached garage on the condition that the detached garage should never be converted into an accessory apartment. Be further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your, your motion carries. You're all set. Now you deal with the building department, please.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
All right. No problem. Okay. Item number three, appeal four zero two eight, Anthony Smith. Anthony Smith, two forty-one Lee Town Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing eighteen foot by fourteen foot or two hundred and fifty-two foot shed to be located in the front yard pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So Mr. Smith, okay, there you are. We had an opportunity to review this last month. Your shed is, according to your survey, it's over a hundred and seventy-two feet away from the property line. You did not build that shed, but you have replaced the roof on it and you've done some work to it to, you know, to keep it in goods, in good condition. So it's a functional set. It's not really visible from anybody passing by on the road, you know, except maybe in the dead of winter. And so that's why you would like to keep it there. You actually have two lots that you are now combining because we talked about the line of, or this, whether the pool was going to meet the setback. And apparently there's a gazebo on your property that's not, that was not being shown on the survey. But you did tell us that you are going to be combining these two lots so that you'll have a total single lot of just over four acres.
Yep. The only, the only thing is we, it's, I don't have a gazebo. It's just canopy.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, that's fine. But yeah, so is there anything else relevant to the, from what I did not, anything I did not say that you think should be on the record?
Nope. I, and I already filed with Pecy, the, before the last meeting, the joining of the two lots. So that's already, you know, in progress with them.
That's great because as I said, otherwise that we were going to run into an issue with the pool being too close to the property line. So
Yep.
Okay. So comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Jim's good. Okay. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Anthony Smith, two forty-one Lee Town Road in Stormville, requesting a variance to allow an existing eighteen foot by fourteen foot shed to be located in the front yard? As I said earlier, it's about a hundred and seventy-two feet from the road.
If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands.
So do we, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second by Jim. I saw that. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution?
Our resolution being offered, this is appeal number four zero two eight. Applicant is Anthony Smith requesting a variance from the requirement of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance to allow an existing eighteen foot by eighteen feet by fourteen feet, two hundred and fifty-two square foot shed to be located in the front yard. The property is located at two forty-one Lee Town Road, Stormville. Our resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas applicant has lived at the property for fifteen years and the shed predates the ownership of the property and whereas the applicant applied to the ZBIA for this variance after applying for another permit and the non-compliance of the shed was identified by the building inspector. And whereas applicant is also in the process of combining his two adjoining lots. And whereas the shed is set back over a hundred and fifty feet from the roadway and adequate foliage that screens the shed and the shed is same color as the house. And whereas all of these factors might mitigate the visual impact. And whereas this is a type two action or seeker, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess news on March sixteen, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property and, and it being a corner lot, the variances are not substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Anthony Smith for a variant, for a variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the town code to allow an existing eighteen feet by fourteen feet, two hundred and fifty-two square foot shed to be located in the front yard. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So Mr. Smith, your motion carries. Now you'll just deal with the building department. Just make sure you have all the appropriate permits for the shed. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
All right. So that is the last of our public hearings this evening. So there's not going to be any additional public comment on any applications at this time. What we are going to do is we still have four applications to work our way through. So we're going to, you know, take our time with these, make sure the board understands what each of the applicants is looking to do. And then, you know, at the appropriate time, set these applications for public comment from any neighbors. So we're going to start, the first review is, is applicant, is item number four, appeal four zero two seven, David Cabibbo. Sorry, Daniel Cabibbo, one ninety-one Creekside Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a nine foot sideline variance to allow a proposed five hundred and ten and ten square foot garage and a twenty-seven foot rear line variance to allow a proposed nine hundred and fifty square foot addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So there's no public hearing for us to open on this one. We did actually, Mr. Cabibbo, it's nice to see you in person. Thank you. But yeah, we did have an opportunity to discuss this a little bit last, last month. You were going to kind of go back and kind of rethink things a little bit because you and your dad apparently had worked through this drawing and what you were proposing to do. I think our biggest concern was what you said is that you have an existing four bedroom house and that you're going to take one of the existing bedrooms and make it into a workout room, which is great. But the next user of that house, what you're proposing in this addition is to put in a bedroom and a den, which the next user of this house may look at this and say, oh, it's a six bedroom house. That's what we have to be concerned about because your septic may not be sized appropriately for that to happen. So based on the conversation that we had last time around, can you give us an update with where you're at?
Yeah. So we're still, we're still in the same, the same position that we're in last time in terms of removing a bedroom from the existing home. I did notice however, though, in the, in the, in the document here in the agenda, I did notice that it says we're requesting a nine foot sideline variance. But in the actual, in the actual survey, it's looking like the survey is fourteen point seven feet and then fifteen and a half feet, just because the nature of the property, it's, it's on an angle. And so I don't know if that's just the typo or the submission issue. And then the rear line is twenty-two point eight and twenty-two point one. So we did clean up the drawing. The, it's still a nine hundred and fifty, fifty, approximately nine hundred and fifty square foot living space. The garage is about five hundred and eighteen feet. And so I did try to show more at a high level what that looks like. We will be removing a bedroom from the existing home in order to satisfy the, the requirement of the, the septic. It's a one thousand two hundred and fifty gallon septic. And so we will be removing one bedroom. And then in the drawing, one of the other things, you guys gave me a lot of homework last time. One of the other things was to, to show the connection between the existing home and the, the addition. And so what I tried to do was just give you a sense of in the other drawing, where the existing home is, where Creekside Road is, and how the two, how, how basically they attach. I also tried to point out the entry, does have a separate entry there. And I think those were the biggest. I think those were the biggest points.
Thank you, Jackie. Did we get updated information? I don't have anything new.
She, she.
You're on mute.
Yes, I sent that diagram out to everybody.
You, you emailed it out to us? Oh, okay. There was an email. Got it. Let me get to, let me find that email. Hold on. Got it. I got it. I got it. Thank you. No, I was just like, wait, I'm looking at paper. But yeah, I gotta rotate it. It's you guys are looking at me turning my head because on my computer, it's going a different direction. Okay. So, so that's, let's go to a couple of issues. Let's talk, you, when you say you're going to be removing a bedroom from the home, what do you mean by that?
We'll be removing one bedroom. So, so that net, it's four bedrooms. So there's currently four bedrooms in the existing home. There'll be three bedrooms in these existing, existing home under the, under the rules or whatever, you know, whatever the rules are around. You know, making sure that I have the right septic that supports the right number of bedrooms. So if that means, you know, removing doors or removing closets, you know, then that's, and that's part of what needs to be done that qualifies as, you know, no longer a bedroom. Then that's what, that's what we would have to do.
Okay. Michael and or Matt, give, can you give us a little bit of direction with? Can somebody actually remove a bedroom? I mean, what, the next person that buys this house, what are they buying? They're going to buy a room that they can turn right in, back into a bedroom, right?
That's right. But I do think, I do think Mr. Cabibbo could make internal changes that according to architectural manuals and other things would actually remove a bedroom from his count. But your point is, it's well taken in that, so the next person could come in and just create a bed, a bedroom out of it, assuming there are no, you know, structural changes.
Yeah.
They could also technically convert like the living room to a bedroom. You can go to a family room to a bedroom. So I mean, I have, you know, to the same degree, I, you know, I don't necessarily have control. I mean, none of us really has control over, you know, somebody coming in and converting a dining room into a bedroom.
Yeah. One of my understandings is if there's no closet in it, that's one of the things they look at to see whether it's a bedroom or not, whether that makes a lot of sense or not in terms of how many people are living there is something else. But that is, Michael was referencing, you know, architectural and building codes issues. That is one of the things they look at. And obviously if it's a bedroom, it has to, which I presume it has, you have to have a proper sized window in it. So that there can be proper fire access to it. If there was a fire and somebody was in a attic, I wouldn't expect it to change to put a smaller window in or anything, but I don't know. Nothing could prevent somebody from putting the closet back in, was as easily removed, but I well, you could have it's one of those gray areas where you could say, you know, you could have thirty people live in there, even though you only have three bedrooms. So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Take his word for it. We don't want to.
Right. And, and Mr. Cabibbo, I don't doubt that your intentions are sincere. As you said, you're, you're a single person household with your, your parents. You're not, your intent is not to make this an accessory apartment. It really is for your parents to have their own space. Because, you know, as you said, they're elderly, they need first floor access. So all of that absolutely makes sense. Okay. But what it is that you're proposing is a bedroom and a den, which a family moving here from anywhere else is going to look at this and say, oh, it's a six bedroom house. That's the, that's truly what worries me. Because you're not looking to make any changes to your septic. So I guess, do we have any idea, Matt or, or Michael, how the health department would look at this?
Mr. Cabibbo, do you know what your septic capacity is currently?
He said twelve fifty.
It's twelve fifty, yeah.
Yeah, it was designed for four, Michael.
Okay. Uh, we, we could also request a letter from the health department as well. If this matter goes to public hearing, we could request a letter from them in the meantime and see if
Okay.
See if they would have any comment on this.
That, that would give me a, just a higher level of comfort. Again, I don't doubt your intentions are sincere. It's just, I, I, we are, we, our role is not to just look at your use. It's to look at the future use. Okay. So that's why we have to consider that in, in our determination. So.
Yeah, because essentially anyone can change the use of a room designated for something else.
Right.
I, I, I hear you. Yeah, I hear you. But I mean, that means, you know, someone could, could change a living room into a bedroom and with a closet, someone.
We all agree.
Dining room.
We absolutely all agree.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I, but again, I, I hear where you're coming from. So if it makes sense to, I mean, what, it makes sense to get a letter from the board of health. Is that, is that, is that something I would, I would need to do? How does that work?
Yes, it would, it would not be up to us to do that. It would be, definitely would be up to you to do that. So explain to them what you're looking to do and, you know, explain to them the, you know, they, they should have records on file for what size septic you have, et cetera. So it would be helpful for this board to see that the health department is not concerned about the capacity that you're adding onto the house itself. Okay?
Okay. Great.
All right. But, but then otherwise, you know, what, what you were proposing, you know, we did talk about it was a little bit large for, you know, generally for a two bedroom unit. I'm sorry, for a one bedroom unit, you know, accessory apartments in our town, the minimum requirement is they have to be six hundred square feet. You know, eight hundred square feet is even a nice sized one bedroom. And you're proposing nine fifty, but like, again, you have both parents still there. And so having both of them live there, they, they likely need a little bit more space, especially for mobility issues. We did encourage you because I know you said just you and your dad kind of drew this up. We did encourage you last time around to consider like some of the universal design standards where you've got wider doorways and things like that, since they are likely to be aging in place there. So but yeah, other than that, I think our biggest issue when we had a discussion last time around was just to make sure that this was what you were, you know, seriously looking at in that bedroom wise and septic wise, this made sense. So any other comments or questions from board members?
I was just wondering, do we have to look at the advertising for the setback requirements? Seems like it might be a little bit short. Like he mentioned the nine feet, should that be actually eleven feet?
Well, so it's supposed to be twenty-five feet.
Looking for fourteen feet away.
I've got fourteen point seven, fifteen and a half on the sideline. And then twenty-two point eight and twenty-two point one in the back.
Okay. And the building department and Jackie are seeing that you, you have a twenty-three foot rear yard setback is what you're proposing. So that's where the twenty-seven foot comes from. And you've got a sixteen foot side yard. So again, that's why measurements by a professional are helpful.
Yeah, that's why I tried to include the survey.
The survey showing he's, yeah, he's only fourteen and a half feet away. So it looks like we need eleven foot for the sideline.
Okay. So I'll change the nine to eleven. The sideline.
Doesn't have the full fifteen feet, Jackie.
Maybe twelve.
No, no.
Twelve. Twelve feet.
It's fifteen point five.
So we need we need just eleven.
Fourteen.
Yeah, he needs, he needs really ten. Yeah, he needs, he needs really ten and a half. So let's give him the eleven, cause we do it in round, we round it off to the new, to the next foot. So the side yard should be eleven.
Okay, and then the rear, should we do?
He's got twenty-two and a half, um, so he needs
He needs fifty. We go to twenty-eight instead of twenty-nine. Twenty-eight instead of twenty-seven.
Right. So yes, so that's better to get that correct. Anything else? Okay, have you spoken with your neighbors about this?
I have not yet. I wanted to chat with you all first, um, before I did that. Yeah.
If you have an opportunity between now and next month and to talk to them and if they want to send letters in, that would be helpful too, as you we heard from the other applications, so. All right, do I have a motion to?
Okay, good. Yeah, one of the things is that I know that I'm looking at the hand sketches. Is it possible to have a uh, an architect, just, you know, so at least I understand, I can lay it on the map, uh, and then be able to see what is being proposed, uh, because it's, you know, with hand sketches, you know, things are subject to change. So if I know what exactly I'm approving, uh, it'll be a big, uh, big help to me.
So is, as he told us last month, Aziz, um, he really wanted to make sure he was going to get approval from us before he went to the expense of bringing a, a professional on board. So whatever we approve, he's gonna tell his architect, that's what they gotta work with, cause he's not going to come back.
I, yeah.
Okay, if that's
As much as you totally enjoy the experience with us, you're not going to come back.
Yeah, because then, you know, some people come back with, you know, I was off by a foot here and two feet there, and then we have to deal with this whole issue, and it has happened in the past.
Right. Nope, that's why he's clarified that the side yards and the setbacks right now, we just went through that. But, and he's gonna tell his architect, this is what they've got to work with.
Okay, good. Thank you. So motion to advertise.
Thank you. Second, good? All in favor? Thank you. You, you do need signs, okay?
Okay.
Um, so if you can call Jackie sometime this week, she'll let you know what you gotta do. And then we'll see you next month. So if you can talk with your neighbors between now and next month, that would be helpful.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. All right, item number five, appeal four zero two nine Nicholas Barb, Barbaria. Sorry, I hate to crucify names. Nicholas Barbari, sorry, Barbaris. We have it two different ways, spelled two different ways on our agenda. Twenty-four Prentice Drive, Hopple Junction, requesting a two foot height variance to allow an existing six foot fence located in the front yard pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. Now your screen is saying Barbaria, so Jackie, you gotta correct one spot on the agenda for, with, with his name. So Mr. Barbaria, this is the first time we are seeing your application. So if you don't mind taking us through, obviously there is an existing fence. The first question would be, did you install this fence or when you bought this property, was it there already?
Sure, uh, I'd like to introduce myself, uh, Barbaria. Thank you so much. Too bad, cause it's, uh, been worse in the past, but, uh, thank you, uh, thank you so much for, uh, you know, having, having me tonight. The, the fence was installed by me. It was not here, you know, when we, when we bought the house, but, uh, we put it up not knowing what the uh, ordinances were and permits involved and where the property line was. So obviously, this is why we're here. And, uh, we wanna resolve everything and do it correctly. And, you know, we apologized for, uh, not doing it right the first time.
That's okay. So where is the fence exactly?
So it's, uh, it's, it's about, I don't know, would you say about eight feet off of the, uh, the, the, uh, the road, Kristen? I'm talking to my wife at the same time. About eight feet off the road and it goes straight up the side of the driveway and then goes to the back of the house and wraps around the back of the driveway.
So just one side, just the side of the driveway, it goes up that side, or does it go up both sides?
Nope, it goes up the, uh, the side between myself and my neighbor's house, goes up that side of the driveway and then goes towards the back of my house and then has the gate going to the backyard, which connects to the back of the, uh,
But you say it starts about eight feet in from the road. Are you sure it's not ten feet in from the road? Because there's likely a right of way for the first ten feet that is not technically your property?
Yeah, no, it's actually, it's probably about fifteen feet.
Okay, all right, cause, um, obviously the thing we've got to worry about is not just the right of way, but making sure you're not blocking any sight distance.
Correct, yeah. And we, we made sure that, that, uh, when I put it up, that it was, when you back out of the driveway, you have plenty of room to see if there's cars coming both ways. Or from that way, I should say.
Okay, so is there a reason you put it up that you want to express to this board?
Sure, absolutely. It was, uh, purely aesthetic, uh, you know, when we first talked about it, my wife and I, um, but as time went on, we talked about this for over two years. Uh, the reason we put it up was because, you know, we go out early in the morning to go to work and we have the rain cameras. So there's black bears and there's foxes. Um, so we put it up just for protection and also a basketball hoop for our kids, uh, two young kids. So the ball doesn't go flying into the woods.
Okay, um, is there screening on the fence on the side of your neighbor, or do they see the full length of the fence?
Um, they do see the full length of the fence, but, um, it does towards the tail end as it gets towards the road. It transitions from six foot to four foot fence. So it actually matches what they have in their front yard. So it kind of blends in what, what they have. Kind of makes both properties look a lot better.
Okay, so wait, in the front yard, it transitions to four feet?
On the side of the house, on the side of the house where they have a fence in their front yard. So on the side of our driveway where it meets their fence, it transitions from a six to a four foot fence, which they have a four foot in their front yard.
Okay.
And it just kind of coincides with what they have and it kind of matches and it makes it look nice.
Okay, so is it actually on the property line or is it two feet off the property line?
Um, I actually don't know. I, I wanna say that it's more than two feet off. I really don't know. I, I, uh, the survey that I had submitted was done by, uh, Johnson Surveying. Um, I don't know if it was included on there. I kind of
I'm not seeing a fence on the survey. That's why I have to ask.
Oh, okay, um.
Do any of you guys see a survey?
It's very, it's just dark. You can't, it's almost like it looks like it's on the property line.
It looks like a double lines on the survey. It doesn't show any distances or anything off the property.
Usually it would be labeled too, and it's, but I don't
I mean, so even if it's double dark, uh, it is not showing as a fence anyplace on the map.
Yep.
It has to be labeled somehow.
So we have to deal with the fact that it's not just the six feet, but it's not two feet off the property line.
Correct, okay.
If you're trying to match up to your neighbor's fence, it may help for us when we do a public hearing, if you have a picture of that.
Okay, yeah, I could definitely, uh, whatever you, whatever you guys need, I could, I could send pictures, uh, whatever you need, absolutely.
And, and obviously, if your neighbor wants this fence to remain, it would be helpful to get a letter from your neighbor.
Oh, absolutely. I spoke to him numerous times and, uh, his reply was, uh, you know, this is what we do for our kids and our family. We protect our kids and, uh, he's totally okay with the fence. I've spoke to him numerous times.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Motion to advertise from the board?
I am concerned, I'm still concerned because there's a fifteen foot wide drainage man, there's a pond swamp. So, um, I just need to know where the fence is. Uh, is it going to be, uh, impeding the drainage easement? Um, you know, applicant is saying it's off by two feet, maybe it's on the property line.
But it's not on that side, Aziz. It's on the other side. It's on the driveway side. That's why I asked before, was it on that side? It's, he said the fence does not go back the side, on the side yard, on the, on that side.
Correct.
Um, I told the applicant that it goes and wraps around.
Round, round the back of the driveway.
Correct, yes.
Not around the whole property.
Do you have the pictures that I sent out?
No, I don't have any pictures, but I just have, so basically it wraps around the asphalt driveway, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, then, um, motion to advertise.
Yeah, cause it's not, it's not touching the easement. I, I saw that as well, so we're clear on that side. Good. Um, all in favor of the public hearing?
You need a second.
We, we did.
Okay, okay.
We're good. Okay, so, um, so Mr. Bar, Barbaria, if, if you could see Ja, or call Jackie this week and she'll I'll tell you what you gotta do to get your sign up, um, and then we'll see you next month. But if you could talk to your neighbor and get a letter from them, that would be great.
We're also looking then for, see if the surveyor can give us a distance on the fence.
Well, yeah, that would be helpful.
Yep.
A- absolutely. I'll, I'll, I'll work on that and I'll get, uh, a letter from my neighbor and, uh, I'll call Jackie, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, if, if the surveyor, cause he just did the survey. If the surveyor could label the fence better would be really helpful.
Absolutely.
If he gives us, just a section of the survey for that area would be fine. And it's trying to put a whole thing on one eight by eleven sheet makes it probably too small to see, but maybe he can give us a section of that survey.
Understood, absolutely.
And if you could also ask him to show the distance of the shed from the property line.
Uh, you said the, the shed?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause that shed is at least fifteen feet in, right?
Um, that was there when we bought the house, so, uh,
Doesn't matter. Is that shed at least fifteen feet in from the property line?
I have no idea. It's actually about to fall down to be rotting.
Okay, so are you taking it down?
Um, I was going to plan on it, but I have no idea yet. I was gonna call the town obviously first to see if it's okay.
Okay, so if you are going to replace it, you're going to make sure it's fifteen and feet in from the property line.
Absolutely. I'm not doing anything without making sure it's completely okay.
Norma, I believe it's about nine feet from the property line, from the, uh, map. I can, you know, it says nine feet, so it's, it's within fifteen feet.
Yeah, so he, he, he doesn't have the fifteen feet. So if it's rotting, he's gonna take it down. And if he decides he's gonna put up a new shed, it's going to be more than fifteen feet from the property line.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Thank you. I like applicants that understand where we're coming from.
Totally, and I have an open, uh, permit right now. We're putting a pool in the, the backyard for my, for my kids, so that's already
So you, so you know the building department's watching your property then?
Off that I'm doing everything proper. It's, uh, I, I'd rather it that way.
It's, it's less problems when you go to sell your property, so, okay, good. Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, item number six, appeal four zero three zero, Kevin Corlins. Or Torlins, I'm not sure. Three eighty Rushmore Road, Stormville is requesting a thirty-eight foot front yard variance to allow our proposed twenty foot by twenty-six foot or five hundred and twenty square foot carport pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Chorlins. If you can raise your hand so that, um, Michael can
It looks like the applicant representative of Ruben Buck is gonna speak on this.
Okay, okay.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So this is the first time we're seeing this application. If you can just take us through it, I'd appreciate that.
My name is Ruben Buck. I work for engineering and surveying properties. I'm here presenting on behalf of the applicant. Uh, applicant lives at three eighty Rushmore Road. On the property, there's an existing, uh, three family or, sorry, three bedroom dwelling. Uh, the applicant is proposing a carport, uh, which is going to be located, uh, within the front yard, required front yard setback. Uh, that corner of the property, the driveway comes up from Rushmore Road and actually at no point uh, crosses the setback line. So the entire driveway is located within the front yard setback, uh, due to the slopes on the property and the location of the existing driveway. Most feasible location for the proposed carport is obviously where the driveway currently exists. Uh, to relocate the driveway or do any site work or grading to, um, propose the carport elsewhere would be, um, not feasible for the applicant. So that's why we are reporting tonight.
Okay, um, why a carport? Tell me what this is going to look like. Why not a garage?
If I can share my screen, the applicant actually had architectural drawings prepared. That visible?
Not yet.
It says you're sharing, but it, there we
There it goes.
There we go.
So it has sides.
It's, so the, you, can you also my cursor?
Yes.
So this portion of the carport here is open. And there's beams in the rear.
So almost looks like an equipment shed for a farm, yeah.
And he's got, there'll be indoor storage, small indoor storage area in this portion. And this, this, these doors face the existing, these doors will be facing this existing walkway to the house. So this carport will be able to have two cars, um, stored underneath it.
So it's got a back and sides.
Yeah, so it's got finished sides on two sides and the other sides are, so that you could literally drive right through it?
No, the, the rear of it is going to be, uh, it's gonna have siding on it.
Oh, okay.
So the side, the side facing the road will have siding, uh, the front portion here is gonna be open. And this portion over here will also have some siding. And then obviously indoor, indoor storage for this section.
And does the finish of this matches house? What have, what's
Gonna, what color is it? What's? I would have to consult with the architect. I'm not sure what color, uh, was selected. I would assume he, he would like to choose a color similar to that, the side of his house. But I can verify that.
Okay.
You know how far from the property line it is? Just said, within the front yard setback. I don't see, looks like you need a, a variance too.
The, the carport will be twelve feet from the front yard setback, or sorry, from the front property line shown on the plan here.
I think maybe I was just misreading the ar, application. I was reading it initially, as you just wanted it in the front yard as opposed to the back of the house, which I don't know if
No, he wants this in the front of the front yard of the house and only twelve feet away from the street.
That's correct.
Tell me about his neighbors. What's his, what's the neighborhood like? Cause this is Rushmore Road, so it's a little bit more rural than other places in town.
Correct. It's very rural. I was just looking at it before I presented because I was, uh, anticipating this question. Closest neighbor is several hundred feet from this property, uh, very, uh, rural. So the only visual impact that would result from this is, uh, people driving by on Rushmore Road. The dwelling itself is actually, um, closer to the front yard than the, we're posing the carport. So there, the effect of it is gonna be no greater than where the, the house currently is. We made sure to propose the carport at least behind the, the, um, behind the, the house.
And when was the house built?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Jackie. Does the house predate zoning? So I guess the question I have is, um, why is the, it can't, you move, it looks like that's flat. Why can't you move the garage further in, even if it means you're putting the open side closer to the street or more visible to the street? Why couldn't you move that carport in more?
So the, the way we have the carport positioned is that as you follow my cursors, would be the vehicle coming up the driveway.
Right.
The, the extent of the gravel comes right below where this call out label is, and it comes back toward this walkway. The, the extent of the gravel comes right below where this call out label is and it comes back toward this walkway here. So positioning the carport in this way, it allows the two open bays for the port to be facing interior to the property. And allows a vehicle coming up this driveway to have an easy turning radius into it. If we were to rotate the carport so that the openings are, let's see if I can give you. Doesn't look like it's a, let me draw a line, oh, there we go, so if the open face of the carport is positioned here, the, in, the enclosed storage is now going to be on this side.
Okay.
Which is right next to this, uh, steep incline as it comes up the hill toward this flat area where this, these, uh, stone walls are.
So you put it on the other side of the structure?
And then, so a similar situation there, if it's on the other side of the structure, now it's coming down this steep incline back toward the road.
Hmm, not necessarily, if doesn't, this, because you, you, you turn the structure sideways, is that why you're saying it's gonna end up being closer to the road?
Correct, so if, if, again, this red line is the, the carport bays, if you will, if he flips the storage over to where my cursor is.
Right.
Now that storage opens up to this incline here, or sorry, I'm, this, this, uh, slope here heading back toward the road.
Right, okay.
So if he's, if he's storing lawn equipment in there, lawnmower and such, it's, he's gonna have a difficult time coming out of that storage area and then having to work his way back up the hill, whereas positioning this way, one, the, the opening to the storage is toward this existing walkway to the house and it's coming out at a much flatter, uh, slope.
And so why couldn't you come up the driveway and then turn left into the garage? Just push the, or the carport, why not just push the carport back? I mean, I, I get the curve of it's gonna be a little bit more difficult to get in there, but it's not gonna be impossible.
We can, we can use a car turning template to see if we can.
Yeah.
Are you saying keep, keep the carport in its current position, but move it further?
Right, move it where your cursor is, but, and, but turn it around, obviously.
So that the opening is here.
No, so that the opening is, runs parallel to Rushmore Road. Just push, push the box in.
You, you, you're talking about turning a hundred and eighty degrees?
Yeah, you, you've essence, you gotta turn it a hundred and eighty degrees, but push it in at least twenty feet.
So the opening would be on this side?
Correct.
So now if he comes up his driveway, he's got to come here and then kind of do a reverse S to get into the.
Or he backs into it, because it's open, it's not an enclosed garage, so he could back into it.
We can, we can look into that, and again, we can use a, a car turning template to see if that would be feasible. Uh, based on the, the limits of the existing driveway, I, I would imagine that'd be a harder movement uh, than, than where we have it currently proposed.
Does the existing house have a garage?
No, it's got, the, there's a small, uh, section of driveway here. Which I believe is, is currently used, uh, and then the driveway here, so there's no, there's no interior area to park the vehicle currently.
Okay, um. Now that I can see the setbacks a little bit better, what are the boxes, what are the structures that are outside of the setback lines?
These back here?
Yes.
I believe there are chicken coops.
And why are they not in far enough to meet their requirements?
I'm not sure, I can, I can check on that.
How many acres does he have here?
See, it is one six.
Says three acres on the map.
How many acres are required to have chickens?
Ten, well, well over half an acre.
What was it, oh, it says required three acres, I don't know what he had, yeah.
Yeah, Matt, how many acres are required to have chickens? Ten, that's what I thought, so.
They did talk to the most recent, uh, town board though about, uh, possibly reducing that.
They've been talking about that, they've had multiple discussions for years, so. Nothing, and nothing has changed, so there should not be chicken coops for. You will convey that to your, uh, clients there?
Yes, yes, I will, I'll confirm the use of them and, and see if they can be moved within the, the required setback.
Okay.
I'm seeing it's currently one acre.
Yeah, I was looking at what's required and, yeah, it's obviously predated the zoning.
Right, correct, yeah, required three acres, the lot is point eight eight two acres.
Yeah.
Also, I, I think you need to, uh, ask for a variance for the existing as-built house because it's about five feet from the driveway or from, you know, so we, we would need a variance for the existing one-story frame dwelling also.
Pre, it predates the zoning code.
Right, that's why, if you're here with something else, we should just clean it up, not, it's not a big deal, obviously, we're not gonna have him open the house, okay? Um, I, I guess, I mean, the only reason I'm even willing to consider this is because it's, there is no existing garage on the house, so it's definitely in everybody's best interest for people to have places to store things like their lawnmowers and things like that, so, um. I just would hope we could make it as least visible as possible from the road. But again, Mount Rushmore Road is not necessarily a road that is heavily traveled, so, um, is, so is, I guess, as long as it's fitting in with the neighborhood, given the topography of the properties on that road, it's probably in keeping in the character of the neighborhood.
And looking at, I see why, you know, if you move it, rotate it and move it back like the, you're suggesting. But without, if they're not gonna have doors on it, does it better to have the back facing the road than open doors?
Could be, I don't know.
And what, I'll confirm with the applicant, the facade of the carport. Um, it, it, it may be more desirable to have that facing the road rather than the, the tail end of vehicles.
And in this case, it may be more desirable to have like a brown structure regardless of what size the house is, just something that's gonna look more woodsy. Yeah, blend in with the landscape that's there, because I'm assuming there's some kind of scrub there, there's some, there's some kind of vegetation there?
There is, I, I was looking on Google Street View and obviously depending on the time of year those photos are taken, it varies, um, but there, there, there is some scrub, I wouldn't, it's not significant tree growth, it's not gonna shield the, the carport.
Right.
But we'll, we'll make sure that the facade is, is gonna be something natural and it's not gonna be, uh, clearing.
Yeah, that, that would, that would be important, you don't want something sticking out like a sore thumb, what's the pleasure of the board here?
I, I think the applicant has some work to do, so unless there's an urgency to, uh, move forward, I would suggest to come back next month with an updated proposals on all these, these requested variances and maybe option A, option B, option C, and then the, the board could make a determination. Right now, we have too many variables.
Can you, can you come back to us with the, you know, again, we've already talked about some different options that you've got to run through, is there some urgency that he's looking to get this done?
No, we'll, we'll take some time and we'll, we'll speak to the applicant and, and verify the color of the carport, we'll verify the the use of the other accessory structures, uh, on the property, make sure those can be coming to compliance. Uh, we will update the application to include that the house as well, to get a variance for the location of the existing structure. And, and we'll look at some different orientations for the carport, see what will work best, uh, both from a zoning perspective and for, uh, uh, ease of use.
And you'll confirm that there are no chickens?
Will do.
Because technically, if there's a violation on the property, we shouldn't be holding a public hearing, so we shouldn't be actually considering it, so.
We'll make, we'll make sure everything's cleaned up and, not the snuff.
All right, so, Mr. Buckley, we'll see you next month.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
You as well. All right, and last, we have application or appeal number four zero three one, Dom- Dominic Casio. Uh, one oh three Vicki Lane, Hopeful Junction, requesting a ten-foot sideline variance to allow our proposed twenty-foot by thirty-foot or seven hundred and twenty square foot detached garage pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Up, and here he is. So, Mr. Casio, this is the first time that we are seeing your application, if you don't mind taking us through what you are proposing.
Sure, um, hopefully it's straightforward, um, but I'm proposing a, um, twenty-four by thirty detached garage. Um, that is right down my driveway and, um, and I need a tense, uh, ten-foot side variance uh, based on the, uh, twenty-four by thirty foot.
Okay, so it's at the top of your driveway, it's actually behind the rear line of your house. Um, it look, doesn't look like you can really go any closer to the house because you've got the brick patio perhaps there, is that what that is? There's something?
Yeah, it's a, it's a little walkway, but going behind the house right there is where my septic starts in.
Okay, all right, that's good to know, uh, your sheds are not on the septic, right?
No, they are not. And the, the little shed is completely gone, that was a garden shed that was rubber made, so that doesn't even exist anymore.
Okay, good, because that was a little close. Um, and how tall is this?
Um, it is, let me see what it is.
I mean, your house is a one-story dwelling, so I'm presuming your garage is not gonna be more than?
No, it's, I'm looking, I'm looking at the plans here, um, the peak line was gonna be seventeen feet at the top of the ridge line. Of the garage, seventeen feet.
Okay. Matt, what's the limit on a garage? The height limit?
Not, I'm not sure, Norma, I'd have to check that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think there was, but I, I, because I was going twelve-foot wall, sidewalls versus seven and it brought it down to the seventeen-seven, I think, is at the ridge line and it was definitely below the house line.
Just, just wanna be sure.
Sure.
And the finish on the garage would be match yours?
Vinyl siding, vinyl siding to match the color of the house.
Okay. I mean, you, you wanna be able to get between these two structures if you're not gonna connect them, so that's, that makes sense. If, the size of the garage is reasonable, you know, again, a two-bay garage, you need twenty-four feet at minimum, so. Comments or questions from board members?
No.
Um, right now, the applicant has got two sheds and one shed is only about thirteen or so feet from the.
He said the prop, that shed's already gone, he said it was a rubber-made shed that kind of collapsed and he took it down already.
Okay, and what were the other shed, how big is that shed?
Ten, ten by ten.
Okay. Um, motion to advertise.
Thank you. On paper? Aye. So, Mr. Casio, if you could call Jackie, um, call the clerk, clerk sometime this week and she'll give you the information about getting your sign up and then we'll see you again next month.
Sounds great, thank you guys.
All right, take care, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, Aziz.
You're not in a rush, are you, Aziz, but I'll second that motion.
He's still in his office, he's in a rush, let him go home, I had, I hear I have a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, have a good night, everyone.